Welcome to the City Commission Meeting. The date is Thursday, October 23rd, 2025. The time is 6:00 PM. Please join us for invocation or a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner George Asbody. Take a moment of silent prayer. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A call to order. Christine, is proper notice and quorum been given?
Yes, Mayor Hawkins.
Okay, thank you. Agenda update, Tom?
Yes, Mayor. The items 2531, 2532, and 2533, the applicant has requested that those be moved, I believe, to the second meeting in November. And we are asking you to take action to move those items because they were advertised for this evening. So if you could take action to move those to November 20th at the applicant's request, we'd appreciate it.
I move that those items be moved to the November 20th meeting.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Roll call.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
And that is it as far as updates.
Thank you, Tom. Next, we have approval of minutes. Approval of September 18th, 2025 City Commission Workshop, September 29th, 2025 Workshop, and September 29th, 2025 City Commission Special Meeting Impact Fees.
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye. Okay, next up, we have presentations.
Yes, if we could ask Jovi to come on up. Also, Rick and Greg, if you could come up as well. And we'll head down.
Yeah. Let's all go there. Hollis?
Yeah.
Okay. It's Jovi.
Okay.
It's Jovi.
Me too.
Yeah, this is a sad time for the City of Eustis. But a great time for Jovi. After 27 years of being a faithful employee, he's decided that he would rather do something else with his life. Jovi, I think it goes without saying how much you mean to the City of Eustis. You're the man that we can call no matter what. On the weekends, I call him. Don't get worried, I'm not calling any of y'all's names. But on the weekends, I call him and he's answered the call and he's giving me direction. And I appreciate that. But on behalf of the City of Eustis, we'd like to give Jovi a commendation on his retirement. Whereas Joseph Jones has been employed by the City of Eustis since March 12th, 1998, and will be retiring as Deputy Director of Public Works on October 16th, 2025. And whereas during his employment in the Public Work Department, he served the people of the City of Eustis, its city officials, and the City Commission in an efficient and tireless manner, and with honesty, integrity, and dedication. And whereas, he will forever be remembered by the officials and the City Commissions of the City of Eustis, Florida. Now, therefore, in recognition of his service, the City of Eustis, Florida does hereby wish to express appreciation to Joseph Jones. On this behalf and on behalf of the citizens and officials of the City of Eustis, Florida for his faithful service as an employee of the city. Signed and sealed on this 30th day of September 2025. Mayor Will Hollins. And Jovi, we've got the clock for you. Hopefully it doesn't have an alarm. Because you've had many mornings waking up, probably 4:30, 5:00, coming in here every day for the last 27 years. And, you know, something we can do. Jesse, thank you for your time and being at the table.
You know, I've been around for a good while, Jovi. This city would not have operated without you. We love you, we thank you, and you still might get phone calls, too. Mr. Jones, thank you so much for sharing, Jovi, with us all these years. This is a better city because of his dedication and all that you've done for it. Thank you so much.
I would like to express my gratitude for your being here and being available all the time. I especially thank you because I know what's up to go through and carry on while he's gone. So thank you for all of your service. And you told me you might come back for one more day.
That's good.
Thank you for what you've done. I'm new up here, nine months, 10 months into it. And for the 10, 12 years I've been around the city, all I hear is your name. And anytime anything needs to be done, in a trash can or driving a George Best King from one side to the other, you are the guy speeding down, you're the guy who gets it done. And thank you for that. Thank you.
Vice Mayor? And last but not least, Tom?
Yeah, I thank you, Jovi, for everything. You know, you're the guy to call to get it done. And I was amazed that you kept on picking up the phone when I called. Very, and I apologize because not often enough did I call just to say, hey, Jovi, how are things going? When I was calling, it was usually because there was a problem or something needed to be done, and you kept picking up the phone. So thank you.
Before we start, can we have his wife come up? All right.
She's coming.
I think that, you know, she devoted 27 years to the safety she's been in. Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Fire Department, Mary Torres Award, Chief?
Yes.
Thank you. And Jovi, thanks for all you do for public safety over the years. We're really going to miss you. You are the guy that Chief of Police and myself called all the time for help. I don't know, man, it's going to be a tough one. You're a hard one to replace. Now, with that, tonight, we have a pretty special award. In the fire service, we always train for the worst-case scenarios, the what-ifs in the things. And then, one day, June 29th of this year, we had a really, really bad call. We had an incident with a child. And it was a, it was a critical call. I guess I'll just tell you what it is. A young child was playing with a handgun, it went off. He was critically injured. This is one of those opportunities for everybody to shine, and everybody did. The parents did the right thing, the neighbors came out and helped, 911. The fire system worked, the EMS system worked, the helicopter, just everything fell into place. It was such a, it was such a great event that the child actually walked out of the hospital. Okay? So when you, when you hear this, understand that everybody's here to celebrate this because this is, this is truly a miracle. And it took a lot of people to do it. We're doing, we're giving out some awards today, not just to the Eustis firefighters that were there, but also the Lake County firefighters, because this was, this was bigger than just us. Okay? So, because I call the names out, the officers, if you're here, come up front for me. And also, you're self-deploying, that's great. Yes. These are our, these are our friends from the hospital, Sonny and Julie, they work, they work a lot with us, they do a lot of training with us. They're also part of the chief's group, and they're connected with our ALS and paramedic program. So they, they were on the receiving end of us with the, with the child, and they did the other part after we got them there. So it took, it took all these people. So also, I didn't include the dispatchers, because also there's dispatchers in this. Lieutenant Bouchard, I don't believe he's here today. Lieutenant Peckman, could you come up, please? Senior Engineer Bateman, can you come up, please? Engineer Rhimes, he is not here today. Firefighter Mencia is not here today. Firefighter Anderson, could you come up, please? And that's from the Eustis Fire Department that was on the call. In the Lake County, we have Fire Battalion Chief Robert Figgott, I do not believe he's here today. Battalion Chief Stephen Wheeler, not here. Firefighter EMT Richter, no? I know someone are here because they're back there. EMT Daniel James, there we go. And then we have firefighter, paramedic Josh Kibler, is he here? So I just, I just want to also point out, some of these, some of these are not necessarily paramedics, these are EMTs. We do have a couple of paramedic students in here that are learning to be paramedics, but everybody had a part in this. I was not on the call. My deputy chief and my captain were mitigating things around in the background, but they were working a terrible incident. The outcome, like I said, was phenomenal. And I don't know if some of you remember, a couple, a month or so ago, the police chief brought some people in and gave them award. Those were the people that were the neighbors that actually helped. Okay? In the fire service, what we do is we wait for the outcome, and the person has to leave the hospital to get the life-saving award. So in this case, the child walked out of the hospital, which is fantastic, correct? And that's kind of why we want to recognize. Now, I'm giving my guys a, a cherry or a pen. I can't give it to you because your uniform's not our uniform, or you might get trouble out of it. So now you'll be wearing this. Okay? Thank you for all you do, and God bless you. Do you have some words, please?
I'm Sonny Weisopf, I'm the EMS Coordinator for Arnold Palmer Trauma Center, and this is...
I am Julie, private trauma program manager at Arnold Palmer.
All the stars aligned due to the great quality and passionate care and the training that these men and women do really made a true outcome difference in this, this child's life. You know, being flown all the way from this area all the way downtown to us in Orlando, everything that they do really made a true difference in this child's outcome. It starts at the beginning with the dispatcher, and then the crews that arrive on scene and everything they do. So we should be extremely proud of all the services in Lake County, including the City of Eustis. They have a great protocol set up through the medical director's office, everything's great. So again, we thank you guys very much for this, and Julie has a challenge coming for all of you.
And I'd like to get a picture with you guys.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Tell you bye later.
Thank you, gentlemen.
And I wasn't long-winded.
That's impressive, chief. Okay, next up, we have the Events Department, City of Eustis Sensational Awards.
So, again, several years in a row, the Events Department has brought home the proverbial bacon by bringing home bling from the Florida Festivals and Events Association. That is the association that recognizes event holders in the state of Florida. And so I would like to ask Sheri, our new Director of Events and Communications, to introduce the team.
Hello, good afternoon. I'd like to call up Carl Sanger, our Events Manager, please. Christine Jufre, Vendor and Community Relations Coordinator. Anne Heslop, our new Event Coordinator, and Tegan Farren, our Event Aid. We've got some new faces. I wanted to give them a round of applause, they've done an amazing job. Couldn't ask for a better team, they're amazing. Well done, team.
And this year, we received six first-place awards, one second-place award, and one third-place award. And so I think this is more first-place awards than we've received in the past.
Great job. Great job.
I'd just like to say to Sheri, if I hear from one more person from the City of Taveres upset about us hiring you, I might have to get on protective custody, but...
And it happened in Michigan, too, while we were there. And they were complaining to us, and there were some threats made, but we're okay.
Oh, my goodness.
Just let them know, we ain't scared.
I'm very happy here in Eustis, you have nothing to worry about, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you. Okay, next up, Chief, Chief Capri, could you come up, please? Yesterday, we had the opportunity to travel to Fort Myers for the accreditation of the, our guys, the City of Eustis Police Department. And Chief, take your way.
Yeah, we just got the re-accreditation process back in August from the Commission of Modern Law Enforcement Accreditation. We do it every three years. This is our fourth cycle. So prior to coming here, they had two cycles where they got superior ratings. The last few years, we had superior ratings, and 187, give or take, points, we were 100% compliance. They were extremely happy with the way the police department's being run, they interviewed some citizens, they interviewed the community, extremely happy. And I'm just proud to bring this home, it's the hard work of the Men and Women of the Eustis Police Department and the Commission and the mayor. And they were very impressed that the mayor and the city manager drove down there to be there for this award. So it shows by in by the community. Hey, we've got a great police department, we've got a great community, we're going to keep getting better and better and better. And in three years, we'll get Excelsior status. And I'm just really proud, I'm proud, you know, we had a great team here, so thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you, chief. You know, while we were down there, you know, we had the opportunity to, to talk to quite a few people. This guy right here, everyone knows him. He's, he's respected in the field, and we're fortunate enough to have you, and I appreciate it.
God bless you.
I think that, that what you, what you've achieved, I think it shows. So I really appreciate that, so thank you.
Just block out the negative stuff and keep plugging along, and, you know, do the right thing always, and keep moving on. Ain't perfect, we're pretty damn close.
All right. Okay, next up, we have Audience to Be Heard. Tom, you have any cards?
I do. I have a card from Daniel DiVonazzo. But I also, Daniel, I wanted to let you know, you submitted cards for items 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4. We do not generally do Audience to Be Heard under other business. And so I know I have three cards for you, but come on up.
And please, as you, you come up, please state your name, and I'm sure, Daniel, you're a pro at this. State your name, your city, your county resident.
Sure, my name is Daniel DiVonazzo. I am not a city resident, I am a city business operator of several businesses. So a couple of things, you know, I still am very pro-Eustis, some positive things coming. I've got some things in the work, works that I'm pretty excited about, but I will tell you, I, I've really struggled for the last two months, and I try, and I love that we start on a very positive note, but tonight, I do have to address a few things. Specifically, I was a little taken back by, and since they're not going to be discussed later because they're other business, the request, the staff proposal that Tom Carino received a raise in kind of 5% that the rest of the Eustis employees did. First of all, proportionally, if you took the average of what the other employees make and what their increase is, it's substantially less. Second, I, I was a little upset. He lists, they listed, by the way, this is a staff report, Claremont, Leesburg, Mount Dorant, Taveres, what the city managers make. So it looks like, well, you know, we're a little underweighted here, and you know, we want to keep a city manager. Well, you know what I did? I looked up their revenue, and I looked up their population, and proportionally, Tom, you're overpaid. You're, you're overpaid, and I think, considering the number of years he's been here and the things we've gone through recently, I think it's actually time to potentially look in the future for making a change. Because unless something is dramatically going to change on relearning the curve here, it's not working. And I, and I could make, I could make comments about things even recently, when you look at the increase in impact fees for construction of new single-family homes, and what was the comment? We were a little behind the ball there on that. So now we're going to have this substantial increase, which I can assure you is going to discourage people. The next thing I wanted to talk about is 7.2 through 7.4, and if you'll notice at the bottom of all those, it says City Attorney, City Attorney, City Attorney. I think it's time, considering the amount of interaction I've had with the city and legal representation here, and the amount of time you have, let me tell you, this meter spins, I've looked at other communities, I've actually called a few, I actually think it's time for the City of Eustis to hire an onboard legal professional. Onboard, which means no, no other, you know, possible agenda or conflicts, or we have other persons that we're representing, or our, our client, or the company that we're associated with, because you know our attorney is associated with Bone and Schroff, that there's no conflicts of interest, we've got somebody on staff. And now, when I hear Tom say, well, let's get the attorney, or I hear one of the commissioners say, let's get the attorney, we don't have to get, set up a meeting, get the attorney at the meeting, by the way, the meter's running, then the attorney's got to go back for a review, the meter's running, then we set up another meeting to hear what the attorney comes up with, the meter's running, then we go back for documents that have to be reviewed by the City Commission, the meter's running. And does anybody here know how much we're paying our attorney? So I think it's time to realistically, and these three agenda items, I'm not going to have a chance to talk about them, you need to really understand what's going on here. Because I went into, I went into the backup for the meeting tonight, there is nothing that in any way represents, what is, what is the specific purpose of 7.2, 7.3, and 7.4? Because I, I have, I have a good idea what it is, ultimately, and I'm going to tell you, that is not the community that we are in here. That's not the community that just gave those awards out.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have several cards for the time of the item, but that's it for Audience to Be Heard.
Is there anyone else in the audience that has anything that they would like to address? Okay, seeing none, okay. Next on, we go to the Consent Agenda. Anything anyone wants to pull?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the Consent Agenda.
Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye. And next up, we have ordinance. Madam Attorney?
First, we have Resolution Number 25-75, a resolution by the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, approving a promissory note to document inter-fund financing from the city's general fund to the Eustis Downtown and East Town Redevelopment Agency, authorizing execution of said note and providing for an effective date. Ms. Carr?
Hello again. We just had this conversation a little bit ago. As you know, on August 7th, we had a workshop with the CRA Board to discuss the remaining balance in the bling payment on our CRA loan for the three lots downtown, otherwise known as the Waterman site. And you were given two options, and within each of those options, you had some variables, but it was either external financing or internal financing. And staff was given the direction to go with internal financing, using the same rate that the loan we had just paid off was at. So that's what we've done, we've prepared an agreement with an amortization schedule and payment dates with terms, and this allows a lot more flexibility for the city with that property. We own it, we can sell it at any time without any red tape, and this is just formally adopting that, that loan agreement between the CRA and the general fund.
Thank you. May I make a motion to...
Oh, excuse me. No, any questions from Commission? No? Would anyone in the audience like to comment on Resolution Number 25-75? Seeing none, we will close public input. Mr. Mayor?
I'm done. Want to make the motion? Yeah. Now can I make the motion?
Yes, I close public input.
Sorry, I'd like to make a motion to approve 6.1, 25-75. Second. Okay, it's been moved and properly second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
Next, we have Resolution Number 25-83, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, approving a preliminary subdivision plat for Tealwood Estates Subdivision 2025 S03, a 61-lot townhome, single-family residential subdivision on approximately 8.44 acres of property... 8.44 acres of property located on the north side of Orange Avenue, east of Glover Street, and west of Cardinal Street. Alternate key numbers, 121-5013, 121-5544, 109-4828, 121-5536, and 121-5005. Mr. Richardson?
Um, before you tonight is a request from the applicant to, uh, accept the preliminary plat for Tealwood Estates. Uh, the owner is baseline specialty construction. Uh, David Klutz is the engineer for the project. Again, it's approximately, or it is 61 lots on 8.44 acres, uh, with attached single-family as the concept. Um, the property, again, is about 8.44 acres. Um, townhome lots are designed at 22 by 90s to 22 by 100s. Um, the density comes out, uh, net density at 7.23, um, units per acre. Um, there's approximately 42% um, open space provided. Um, the minimum would be 25%. Uh, they have provided 1.1 acres worth of dog park, walking paths, passive park, um, as well as, based on conversations that we have with most townhome projects at the DRC level, there's always the issue with what happens when somebody happens to have a baby shower or guests over, no place for parking. They've accommodated for addition, an additional 32 spaces for guest parking beyond the parking in the driveways or trying to park on street and find other ways, other places to park. Um, application was submitted, uh, in July, uh, beginning of July. First DRC meeting was at the end of July. Applicant submitted revised plans, um, middle of August. Uh, the second DRC was held on September 9th. At that September 9th meeting, there were a few technical issues, callouts for pipe typology and so on, which are covered under the final engineering and construction plans. Therefore, DRC did find the plan technically sufficient on the September 9th. Um, general location and area of where the property is located, Orange Avenue, in between Glover and Cardinal. Um, overall, kind of the development things that are going on in the area. To the north, we have, uh, existing apartments. The Sheriff's Fleet Maintenance, um, I believe some Laura Fleet Maintenance is also up in that area. Um, to the west, we have apartments, church, office. There's some home offices that are up and down along there that, whether they're operating right now or not, dig into them, but they do have, you know, sign frames out and so on. Um, and then to the east, we have some existing commercial parcels as well as the early learning center. Um, generalized layout, or this is the layout, uh, is one of the sheets from the preliminary subdivision plat. Uh, 61 lots, uh, setback a little bit off from Orange Avenue. Um, basically the development taking place in the middle section of the assembled properties. I just, I kind of quartered this out or thirded it out a little bit so that you could actually see the dimensions if you wanted to take a look at, um, what they have planned. Um, they have done some attempt to make some staggering on the placement of the townhomes on the properties. This is representation. Obviously, building permits will determine what they actually will wind up building. Typical lot, 22 by 90 to 100. Um, setbacks at 20 feet. Uh, rear setbacks, actually, rear setback should be at 15, not 10. Preliminary subdivision plan, this is where we are in the process. So basically, um, this becomes the step that comes to you for your okay. Um, based on test of technical sufficiency, staff is recommending that the commission consider approval of preliminary subdivision plat for, um, Tealwood Estates subdivision.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson?
Do they have parks or top lots or walking areas?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yep, let's, uh, actually, if I go to the, well, nope, that doesn't help. Let's go back to those, the third sections out. So, there, the hatched area, um, kind of on the curve, is a pavilion. There isn't necessarily a top lot provided. Um, and as you see, can see the, it's, it's that kind of a crosshatching area on the plan, is the park area or what they're considering to be park area, which ties in a mulched walking trail that kind of wraps down and around as well as connecting into the sidewalk system.
Are you talking about up there where it says Track 2, Jeff?
Uh, gee, my vision's really bad. Yes, Track 2 is one of the park areas.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's more of the people park area. Um, I believe that's like a gazebo pavilion type thing that's out on there. Um, and then the walking trails kind of wrap down in and around between the existing properties and homes and the homes that are being platted or will be platted. Um, I wanted to back up one, well, actually, I didn't include it because of the way I sectioned these out. I sectioned them out as lots. The dog park is actually down closer to Orange Avenue on the westernmost property that will be the western entrance to the property.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to speak on Resolution Number 25-83? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public input. I'll give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, um, can I get a motion for approval? For discussion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
Okay. All right.
What do you want to discuss?
Well, is there an issue that you think?
I, I would just like to see something more kid-friendly, especially in that area. Um, that's gonna, that's, that's in an area where you've got some apartments across the street with a lot of children already. And I know, I, I just think we need to have something a little bit more kid-friendly in that area. I, I, I know there's parks there, but I think it needs to be more of a dedicated for children.
I, I agree with, uh, with Mr. Holland as well. Commissioner Holland, I think we can do a little better.
That's a lot of townhouses with, you know, not as much to accommodate the kids. So you're going to have more kids, a lot more kids.
Definitely. We've got a lot of issues.
Can you please speak up a little bit? We can't hear you at all, um, where, where your conversations are. You, you can move up closer and we'll speak louder.
So, yeah, I think we, we, we've got, uh, some more work to be done on this. And I'm concerned about the infrastructure support. I'm concerned about, um, keeping things balanced. So, um...
You know, um, we've been down this road before. We don't have, we don't have anything in our code for a top lot or a certain playground size. I wish we did, but we've never done it. And I'm not sure we can even can, can now with Senate Bill 180. So, and I agree with you. I agree. I totally agree. With that many, with that many units, we, there needs to be more playground. But the reality is, they don't really have to do it. And we can ask them and see if they'd be willing to.
Okay.
All right.
I'm David Klutz, Project.
All right, Mr. Klutz?
And I, I'm, I do have cards from the applicant, um, that was listed as if needed. So we do have cards from them to speak.
Okay, sure. And, no, we're, we're hearing everything you're saying. And we're not against, I think every, every project we've done, we end up with a top lot in it. And, and we've got plenty of space to put, put some of that in there. And, you know, we're, we're asking for preliminary plat, not construction plan. And we can definitely, uh, I think, come forward without any construction plans for you guys. And staff can make sure that.
I know.
Okay?
How, um, how many bedrooms are in those condos?
Uh, is it, has, have we decided the number of bedrooms? Two, two to three?
Yeah. Anything else?
Madam Attorney, help me with this. How do we, how do we, how do we hold them to that? Because it's not in our code.
We'd have to take him on his word. It's a verbal representation, as you've stated. Um, we really can't deny the petition if it complies with what we have in, in our code. Um, essentially, if there's nothing like a, a public safety hazard here or a specific violation of our code, we really, it's more of a ministerial thing at this point. Um, but they have heard what has been said and have verbally agreed to do that.
Okay.
So why didn't you get administrative approval? Why is he?
Gary, you're right. Because of Senate Bill 182, our hands are going to be tied on this.
Yeah, exactly.
So...
All right. Okay, um, remove, uh, move in second. Vote?
Commissioner Asbadi?
No.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Hawkins?
Aye.
All right. I made the, uh, thank you. Okay. For, uh, first reading, we have ordinance Number 25-37, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, creating Chapter 14 entitled Animals and Fowl and adding Article 2 entitled Residential Backyard Chickens Program and creating Section 115-11.8 of the Land Development Regulations entitled Backyard Chickens Program Standards, providing for legislative findings and intent, establishing definitions, providing for permit requirements, providing for standards of care, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for program review and automatic continuation, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for codification, and providing for an effective date. Okay. So, um, we've, all know we had this coming tonight. Um, we have an ordinance before you. And the purpose of the ordinance, um, as it's laid out, is to establish a two-year pilot program that would allow backyard handkeeping on single-family lots. This will promote sustainability, education, and food resilience while protecting neighborhood standards. This also creates clear permitting, training, and enforcement systems to ensure accountability. The participation for this program would be limited to 15 properties citywide during the pilot. And eggs that are produced are meant only for personal household consumption, not for commercial sale or distribution. This is, uh, the legal foundation on which we have, uh, prepared the ordinance before you, supported in our constitutional as well as our, uh, statutory authority, um, including recognition that this is really not, uh, interfering at all with the Right to Farm Act, because this is not an agricultural ordinance. And it also aligns with several policies in the city's comprehensive plan. The program overview, um, the duration right now will be a two-year pilot. Now, if everything goes well, the idea would be that it would automatically continue without need for the commission to take action unless the commission chooses to repeal it or to amend it. The scope is up to 15 permits citywide. That can also be changed, uh, depending on the feedback you get, by resolution to increase the amount of participants. Eligibility is going to be only for single-family homes. The, uh, training that is required will be the UF, um, slash IFAS Chicken Keeping Course requirement, which Tom, um, and actually all of us, including Commissioner Asbadi, did. Uh, the number of hens is going to be up to three. No roosters. Eggs, again, are for personal consumption only. Sale and distribution are prohibited. Setbacks would be for five feet from property lines and 20 feet from adjacent homes. There are other specifics as to the actual structure, um, that would need to be conformed with as well. The standards are, to make sure it's clean and humane, treatment of these animals, uh, order control to avoid nuisances and keep it street, screened from street view. So these would only be allowed in the backyard of the property, cannot be in the front or on the sides if it's visible from the street. The, um, safeguards enforcement, this is going to be permit-based with an annual renewal. Um, so, the individual would have to first apply, submit, we'll have all that paperwork ready, and we'll present it to you as well through a resolution. The, uh, permit would only be for that year, and then you would have to renew it, just so that we can ensure things are being kept in the, the same way that we need them to according to what the ordinance provides for. If there were a violation, we have graduated penalties. Initially, they would get a warning. Then we would have a hundred dollar fine. That would then, if there's a subsequent violation, $250 fine, um, and then ultimately, ultimately revocation. The inspections, um, they're going to be allowed upon verified complaint. Um, that would be through code enforcement. And if there is a refusal of the homeowner to allow inspection, the permit will be immediately suspended. And that's a condition of the permit application. The city manager would be able to suspend permits if there's, um, you know, a health crisis, whether it's through USDA, FTACS, there's, uh, bird flu, um, some kind of issue that could affect the health. You would have the authority to suspend it as well as resume it once the dangers, um, have been, have decided. And due process would be afforded to the applicants because written notice will be provided. And, um, they'll give, they'll be given an opportunity to cure their violations before their permit is revoked, except for substantial violations. And these would be the most egregious types. Those are also outlined in the ordinance. Now, um, the standards would be that this, uh, just to be fully compliant with the humane care and cruelty prevention of the chickens. Cannot slaughter. You cannot abandon them or have unsanitary conditions. This will require humane maintenance, enclosure, and feeding. So we want to make sure that they're protected from predators and, um, properly cared for so that they're not trespassing into other property owners, um, to avoid issues. And, um, composting would be limited. Burial is not allowed onsite. The program would be evaluated, um, and would be continued as follows. So the, the metrics would be, we have the number of permits, uh, that are issued, how many renewals we get, any verified complaints and enforcement actions that code enforcement takes. We'd have staff hours, um, and administrative costs that we'd be keeping track of as well. And the community benefit and compliance data that would be provided by staff. The program would continue automatically unless it's repealed or amended after a two-year review. The staff report would be due 90 days prior to the expiration to summarize the participation as well as the results of the program, to keep the commissioner apprised. The features is that, um, we would like to encourage courtesy neighbor notification as an option for transparency. That would be part of the form they fill out. It's not required, but of course, we like to respect our neighbors. So we do encourage letting them know. Um, that way they're not surprised. The, uh, public permit log would be maintained by the clerk's office so we know exactly who has permits. Five verified complaints, uh, by code enforcement would result in, uh, sooner review, quicker review. Um, that would be within, if we get by within 12 months, then we would have to come before you and let you know what, what the complaints are and how we've been handling those. So this is going to be data-driven oversight, and that way it's going to ensure accountability for the performance of the program. Now, the benefits to the city. It encourages responsible, sustainable living practices, promotes education and self-sufficiency, ensures that the eggs are for personal use only, maintains neighborhood compatibility and humane care standards, and provides for enforceable oversight and transparency. Fiscal and administrative summary, the fee would be a, initial application would be $75, and then the renewal would be 25. This is, uh, limited scope, just to ensure that we cover some of the, um, administration costs associated. And then we'll, we'll keep track to see if that's, uh, comparable to what staff is doing based on the performance. There would be no business impact. Again, it's only personal use, and the city supports sustainability. So that would actually further that as well as education goals. The, uh, pilot program gives residents a structured opportunity to engage in sustainable living, responsible humanely, and, uh, in balance with our neighbors. It supports personal food resilience and education while ensuring compliance, accountability, and transparency under Florida law. The recommendation from staff is approval of Ordinance 25-37 on first reading, establishing the Residential Backyard Chickens Pilot Program. Are there any questions? Are there any questions for me from the commission?
I have. A lot of questions.
A lot?
Yes. First of all, I guess I will say that I am in disagreement with this. I stated it from the very beginning how I felt about it. And I keep hearing education. For whom? We're talking about, I haven't heard any requirements for our structure or enclosure for that. I'm concerned about the health benefits. Also, I would hate to, I know the size of my lawn in the back and the front. And I think about, most of the homes pretty much are that size. And then you have to, to, to deal with your neighbor having the chickens. And so in close proximity, they bring around the rodents, raccoons, snakes. All of those are attracted to those types of enclosures and chickens and all of that. I have a real concern for health reasons. I also think that it's adding extra to code enforcement, one more thing they have to do when they have so much to deal with now. I, even something about protecting the neighborhood and sustainability, well, I, it's different. If it was a community garden, I could see it. But chickens, I just think that we're, we're bringing on something we're going to really regret eventually. And I think if you have a really large lawn, or if you live a little bit outside the city, have no problems with it. I think it's, it's, it's something that people can do. But with the smaller lawns and, and another thing that I have noticed, I know people who have chickens, and you know what? Even though you say they aren't supposed to sell them, they do. And who's going to monitor that? And it does happen that they have too many, and they do sell them. And who's going to monitor that? So I have an issue with it. I disagree with it, but that's my, what I have to say about it.
Would...
I think we probably should talk about that HOA rules.
Yes. I was trying to just give a, an overview because all of the details are in the ordinance, which was published and is in the packet. So all of the questions that, well, maybe not all of them, but some of them, you know, are your personal stance. As far as the location, we have an entire section on the ordinance. I'm push, I'm going to pull it up that basically discusses what the parameters are for those structures. But I'll just go back up to the top and kind of go through. Okay. So we had, this was all part of the presentation that we did a while back, just as far as what we wanted to include in there. So again, this is strictly going to be for single-family homes. Not every home is going to qualify. And I'll get to that. For, we have over on page one, well, let's see, page 80 on the agenda, but it's the second page of the ordinance. Starting, then on page three, it talks about what would be the substantial violations that would result in your permit being taken away from you right away. For instance, if they, if you're slaughtering the hens, if you're refusing inspection, like we talked about, if you're abandoning your hens, et cetera. The training course is there as well as the clarification, which is part of the application that will be notarized by the applicant. It includes that if they're not the owner of the property, if they're renting, they'll need owner consent. They're going to have to provide a scaled site plan showing the law boundaries, where the coop run location is going to be, as well as the setbacks. Affidavit authorizing the city for inspection on property. And they're going to agree to hold the city harmless with this agreement if they fail to comply with a permit and there's some issue involving the chickens. There's an acknowledgement that HOA covenant deed restrictions or lease terms supersede city approval. We are not going to be going through lease agreements or, or public records or anything like that. That is the responsibility of the applicant, hence the requirement for indemnification. The affidavit will also confirm that they're submitting accurate information. And we will put in there the courtesy notice to the neighbors. If they choose to do that, they'll be able to check off a box. It's not required. But if they do, we actually will have a notice that they can use. And we can also mail a notice, a city mail notice to adjacent property owners as part of the application. So inspections will be required. The eligible properties, they have to have sufficient room. So it will be at the discretion of the Development Services Department to deny a permit if the size of the law, the structure placement, the setbacks relative to the neighboring homes are likely to create a nuisance to address exactly that concern. Because there's not every, every single-family lot is going to be able to make that accommodation. Now, if that denial occurs, the applicant can always come back to the city and appeal it to the city manager. And if the city manager concurs, bring it to the city commission, and that will be the final approval. Uh, I'm sorry, the final decision as to whether that permit will be allowed.
So we have a lot of staff time that would be, that would go into that. And do they, like dogs and cats have to have shots and all? Is there any medical requirements to make sure that they're healthy or that they're taken care of? Something, if they're ill?
That is a responsibility of the applicant to ensure that they're properly caring for the hens.
That's in the paperwork?
And that's, that's in there, and it will be, it's, it's part of the application. Again, this is, we're, we're doing it. That's why the $75 fee comes in so that staff, they have to come with everything prepared. Staff is just going to check that what they've submitted is correct and essentially issue a permit. The code enforcement would only get called out if there's a nuisance or some kind of disturbance or think, something along that, you know, that line that would require them to go out and verify. That's where we're going to keep metrics to see whether $75 makes sense, whether we need to adjust that. That's really the only way is to, is to get that information, see how the, the program works.
Right now, we have a fee for people to, then we have a fee established, it was like $200 or $700 or something like that.
No, this is $75.
No, the, before, we have an established...
Well, that was for the conditional use.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's a different part. This is, this is more of an accessory use because we're establishing the program. So we'll have to see kind of how, how, how it goes, you know, with time. And, and we can always adjust, you know, fines if there's some kind of, of issue with a particular applicant. We have the suspension. Let's see. You know, we deal with a lot of what, what the enforcement guidelines would be. And as far as animal control, for instance, if there is a killing of a hen by a domestic dog or cat, that's not by itself going to deem that animal a dangerous animal. Because again, we learned that hens, they have to have their wings clipped. Otherwise, they can fly, and they can go into another neighboring property. And if there's a, a dog up in the backyard or a cat, and they get into an argument and the other one wins, it's really not a situation that we're going to, you know, punish the other property owner and their, their domestic animal for. So we have the administrative review again. If we're, if we have five verified complaints from code enforcement within that first 12 months, we'll come back for you and let you know where things stand. We'll keep track of this, the staff time to really give you the information you need to see if you need to make any adjustments to the program, you know, as, as things go. If not, you'll hear just basically a report from staff 90 days before the two-year expiration, and then they'll just kind of proceed. The other component here, you know, if there is a, a health advisory that is related to the poultry health, then we'll also not only notify the, the applicants that have active permits, but we will also put it on our website. And once they give the clear, we'll also notify them and put it on the website that they're back in effect. And as far as the standards, that's what, that's what we're putting in the LDRs. You're going to have the, the number of, of hens in there. Again, the education component here is actually discussed on page six of the ordinance, page 84 of the agenda. Because one of the things we covered was incubation and hatching. So if a family wishes to go through that process with their children for, you know, to hatch the, the eggs and go through that fun experience, we've had it at the library. A lot of people have interest in that. So we wanted it included in there. However, if they happen to end up with a rooster, they need to part ways with it and, and make arrangements to take it elsewhere.
If they hatch eggs and they have, allow three chickens, three hens.
Right. So if they get a...
And they're going to have more eggs, I mean, more, more chicken, right? If, if they have, if they go through an egg hatching process, and they have a little baby chickens, so they are going to have maybe, if they have three or four or five that hatches, then they got, they have more than three chickens.
They can only keep three. So if they hatch more than three, then they have to get rid of the rest, you know?
If I could jump in there, if you don't mind, just to, to clarify, correct me. We sat through a class online. Sasha, Tom, and, and Eric from Code Enforcement and I think Development Services. But if you don't have a rooster, you're never going to hatch an egg. So that's...
But she mentioned that they might want to do this with their children, go through an education process.
That they can't have a rooster. So if they have a rooster, if they, if they hatch an egg, somebody needs to go see a family attorney because somebody got fertilized outside of where they're supposed to be. So there's no roosters. If they do rooster...
That could do, make them two, take them home and let them...
Do artificial insemination? Okay.
Well, the eggs come, they come fertilized, I believe. You'd have to buy them that way. So if they want to go through the experiment of, you know, incubation and hatching, they can do that at home. They have sold the, you know, the light lamps and all of that. But if, I think at like 20, between 22 to 24 weeks, 20 to 24 weeks, that's when you can tell the, the gender of the, of the chick. And then that's, if it turns out that it's a rooster, they're going to have to part ways with it because they're not allowed. So that's what I meant.
Thank you, Sasha.
Yeah, no problem. So the coops and the runs, they have to be in the backyard at least five feet. We have from the property lines, 20 from any residential dwelling on an adjacent lot and must be screened from street view. We have, we can do a hybrid setback, which is allowed for in the ordinance. If the Development Services Director, depending on the property, right? He can, he can require up to 15 feet from the property line, 15 feet, 50 feet from wells, stormwater facilities or other water bodies. That's, you know, again, case by case, really affording, looking at if that particular property is, is adequate for it. And coop runs cannot exceed 100 square feet in area or six feet in height. And hens must have at least four square feet of space in the coop and five square feet in the run. The structures must be ventilated, covered, predator resistant, constructed of welded hardware cloth or the equivalent, and chicken wire is prohibited. So that's meant to protect them from the predators. Sanitation is covered there. You know, they are supposed to make sure that the feed is, well, first maintaining clean condition, free from any objectionable odor. What does that mean? If it, if we can smell it for more than 15 consecutive minutes within one hour, then we have a problem. So that's how we're going to have a, an odor nuisance come through. The feed has to be stored in rodent-proof containers to avoid attracting other animals. Manure cannot collect. So they, they have to really be good about cleaning out the coop. Compost is permitted only in enclosed bins, 20 feet from, 20 feet from the property line. We, burial is not allowed. So we have all of that included in there. And they have to comply with all of the health regulations. They have to dispose humanely of their hens. If, whether they need to rehome them, transfer them to another lawful permitee. Maybe someone only has one or two, or one of theirs died, and they want to give up one of their hens. They can do that too. Or so they can surrender it to a facility that would accept poultry's. They can't be abandoned. They can't be surrendered to a government agency that doesn't accept them. So they can't just drop them off, you know, wherever they would like. And the, the coops and runs cannot be located anywhere where there's a platter utility or drain adjustment, FEMA floodway, or a required landscape buffer. Electrical or plumbing services require separate permits. So like, all of, all of these things are going to be looked at when the applicant comes. So also storm securing, that's a new one. So we, if there's a declared wind event or hurricanes, they must secure the coops and runs or relocate the hens to prevent hazards or escape. And, you know, we did our best to encompass as much of the parameters that are out there while still making this a possibility for the residents and, you know, preserving enforcement as well as health standards and trying to reduce as much of staff time as possible. So...
Thank you.
Yes, of course. Any other questions? No? Okay. Would anyone in the audience like to ask me a question on this? If you could just come up to the podium.
Pam, please.
Pam.
Did we have our discussion yet before public speaks? Did we close? After? Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, Pam Reavis. I'm a resident of the City of Eustis. And I just wanted to list some, I feel like Eustis is a little behind on some things. And we're trying to get ahead of the ballgame. But this is another area where we're behind. In Lake County, Claremont, Leesburg, Mascot, Mineola, Mount Door, Umatilla, and Howie in the Hills all have chicken ordinances. In Seminole County, Longwood, Sanford, Winter Springs. In Orange County, Orlando, Winter Garden, Winter Park, Maitland. And then if you want to go into the larger cities, Jacksonville, Miami, Tampa, Orlando, Tallahassee. And if you want to go even further, New York, Los Angeles, Chicago, chickens are not a problem. They're not. And they, people are doing them everywhere. And I feel like this is just another area where Eustis could stay behind, or we can move forward. Our residents are asking for it. And there's already chickens in the city. And my question would be, how many calls is code enforcement getting on that? It doesn't seem like it's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Mr. DeVonanza? I'm going to start the timer for you.
15 permits, three, three hens. That's 45 chickens. I cannot believe that we're going to spend this.
Oh, it didn't work. What happened? There we go. Okay, so you're good. Anyone else wishing to speak on this?
Oh. Sit down.
How are we going to shock everybody? Karen LaHoop Smith, resident, resident of the City of Eustis.
Where do I know your name from?
Yeah, I know. I don't know where. But as most of you know, I've been, no, no chickens, please. No chickens, please. We have chickens. Listening to Sasha present this ordinance is well-written. She's got all kinds of things in there to govern this. We have our rooster on the corners. We have, it's, it's something that I think it's time for us to move forward on. Residents have asked for it. Personally, I don't want chickens, but we have bunnies, we have cats. Maybe the cats can help with some of the chickens. It, again, this is a well-written proposal ordinance.
Thank you.
I really appreciate listening. Limiting it to 15 residences, that'll give us a really good idea. So I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, what? Anyone else? No? Okay, I'll close public input. And Mr. Mayor, I'll give it back to you for discussion.
You're going to say so?
No, I was going to say, this, this is just a pilot program. We could, you know, this is just an ordinance for the pilot program so we can learn if this is going to work or not. We have all this time to figure out, will it work, will it don't work? So I think it's, I think Karen's right. It's well-written, it's very comprehensive.
Very comprehensive.
And it's a pilot program. So if we have a lot of problems with it, it's up to us to say we're going to continue or not.
We say we're doing a year, right?
It's a two-year pilot program.
Two-year.
And, yeah. If there, again, if there are five verified complaints within the first year, first 12 months or within 12 months in any period, then we'll come back to you. We'll, staff will come back with that information and check. If you wanted, of course, a status report in the interim, you're welcome to bring it up at any point, and then we'll get staff prepared to give you that information. But the intent is to have it very data-driven so that you have the information at the same time, not overwhelm staff, but also allow for the program.
Okay. All right. Okay. Anything, anyone else?
Yeah, I want to say a couple little things, if I could, please.
Yeah, I wanna say a couple little things, if I could, please. We put a lot of time into this, even as a commission, aside from uh the attorney and city manager and everything, and and we put a lot of thought into it. And listening to former Mayor LaHoop Smith, we I think the staff did a fantastic job in in of putting it all together. There is a balance here. There is an educational factor, and I have the utmost respect uh for Commissioner Lee as an educational professional, and and there is a lot of it. I spend my time at the fair each year, and there is a lot of education going on with it. And there are kids that are just lighting up with these uh animals that they've brought up through that. There is a lot of education. We joke about this a little bit, but there is, there's a lot of greatness. It teaches discipline, it teaches uh all those things, and we see it in the awards. Our city won, uh a resident of our city won an award, a first-place award during the last, the last thing. So that, that's, that's important. Uh we've limited, and and I think it was the mayor, I might be wrong, who wanted it reduced in a time, and we stopped it at two years to review. And uh I I I think this is a great thing, the training is extensive. I took the training uh with the rest of some of the staff and and city. And uh much to what Pam said, and just for the record, Pam is my wife, um is that uh it's time to dip our toes in the water a little bit, see what we got. And if it doesn't work, get rid of it. There's there's a reservation to that. Education is a factor of it, and uh and I'm, and I'm favorable to it.
Do, do we require the applicants to take that class?
Yes.
Absolutely.
All right, okay. All right, uh that's it. Okay, let's take a vote. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty-five thirty-seven.
Second? It's been moved and properly second. Uh roll call, please.
Commissioner Asbody?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Holland?
Nay.
Commissioner Lee?
Nay.
Mayor Hawkins?
I, I, I have to say, I was a nay uh until Karen came up, so.
Oh, thank you.
Yes, 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 yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it for this component?
We're gonna take five minutes, come back at seven-twenty.
Mr. Devenantzo?
The time is seven-twenty, we're back in session. Uh next up is Other Business, seven-point-one, Tom, or is it Karen? Karen?
Hello, Karen.
Hello.
Uh we completed Tom's evaluation process with um the commissioners, and I presented the staff report. And the, the um, let me see here, let me get the staff report. Um it is um, we are suggesting that Tom receive the same raise that the other employees received, which was five percent of the annual evaluation, plus a thousand dollars on top of the, the annual salary.
Okay. Okay.
I do have the, I did list the um, the, the city manager salaries for Claremont, Leesburg, Mount Dora, and Taverries. And that's of, as of October first.
Okay, thank you, Karen. Okay, Commissioners? Mike?
I have spoken with Tom privately. He knows the way I feel. He knows um, he knows there are areas that that need some, some challenge and some improvements. You know, we put him in a position, we need to support him, try to get him there. And um I am okay with a raise, as long as it does not exceed
What do everyone else?
What everybody else is getting, and that's the way we've always operated.
Okay. Emily?
I've spoken with um Tom and had my um evaluation with him.
Thank you. Gary?
Same here, I mean, Tom and I spoke for well over an hour. I know, I know Tom, I know Tom works, I know Tom works hard, but I do agree with Michael. We, we have some challenges, and we have to find a way to get some things done. And at this point on where Eustis is, I, I, I feel Tom, Tom is very well compensated. And I probably would not be in favor of a five percent raise.
Okay, George? Well, I uh, I met with Tom and with uh HR for a couple hours and uh went through quite a few, quite a few things. And uh let me comment first. I, I pulled the staff report and I did a little research myself, and and I think some people hit on it a little earlier. We have twenty-five thousand people in this city. We operate with a budget of about, and please, some of these numbers I got off of Google and they, they're, they're the best in ten. But we have a budget of roughly twenty-five million, and an overall budget, I think roughly, uh in the low one-hundreds. And uh when you compare that to some of the other, some of the other uh people that we're using in this comparison, I'm concerned that the pool we picked from might skew one or another way. And and an example is um, Leesburg has a forty-million-dollar general budget and a two-hundred-and-fifty-one-million-dollar overall, I'm sorry, that's the salary, and a uh huge hundred-and-some-million-dollar, uh two-hundred-and-thirty-three-million-dollar budget. Two-hundred-and-thirty-three-million-dollar overall budget and a general budget of forty, forty million, based on what I got. Same thing with Claremont, two-hundred-and-fifty-two million. So we have to play with the monies that we have. And then I looked at experience. We have a s- uh city manager with some limited experience, roughly three and a half years as a city manager, compared to thirty-three years, twenty-nine years, and twenty-seven years, and what the staff pulled. So just to make my comment, I don't know that we're comparing apples to apples. I um have some concerns uh of being financially responsible in everything. And I, and I just don't see myself being able to vote for really almost any increase at all. Uh I think he's uh being compensated, I think he is trying. Uh I know he said at the meeting here that he's made some mistakes and he can do better. And uh I, I like Tom, uh I like his family. I think he's, he's uh uh off to a start. He's at the early stages of his career, and we can't compare that to thirty-three, twenty-nine, and twenty-seven when we look at pay, experience, pace.
So are you in favor of a, the rates?
With all due respect, I thought we were having a discussion, I'd like to finish.
Well, yeah, you can finish, but-
Thank you.
I don't wanna dissertation.
With all due respect, I, I'd like to finish, please. So you have to look at all of those when you're looking at somebody and and where they are. And comparing those things, we're not, we're probably not in a position where it would be financially responsible to uh, to do uh, certainly not to do any five percent or whatnot increase. We're really, plus the thousand, a thousand would be about a five and a half. So um I gave Tom a lot of stuff, and I asked him to get back to me with his thoughts on it. Uh that hasn't happened yet. It was probably a little short notice in his defense, he's got a lot going on. Uh but uh I, I did do that. And uh perhaps an option is to revisit this in a shorter period of time than a year and and see where we're at. But at this point, um I'm limited in, in if any is appropriate, based on hard numbers and not emotion. Based on emotion, I think his family and him are, are, are just a pleasure to be around.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay. Um I as well, sat down with Tom uh and and Karen, and uh, and I gave him input as well. I, I, I hear that there are challenges, but I don't think that anyone that comes to these city commission meetings can say that some of the challenges don't fall on this commission. Because we haven't given uh direction like we should. And when there are issues, Tom has owned up to it. I can think of a couple of times, Tom has saved us from uh situations where the likelihood of us getting sued down the line uh would've come up. And Tom said no. I think that uh what we're paying him uh is good, and I think the job that he's doing is great. And I think that he should get what everyone else gets, uh so I'm in favor of the rates. One of the things that I, I, I have to say about Tom is I think that I think that as opposed to chaos, uh you know, and and making things happen, he thinks things through, and and I appreciate that. There's no knee-jerk reaction. There were times when there were things that this commission was ready to do. And, and he said, slow it, slow it down, so I appreciate that. Uh so I'm in favor of five percent, uh plus a thousand dollars.
Mayor, I think you said something, you, you kinda hit the nail on the head. Tommy's only as good, Miranda's only as good, and so is this city staff as the five of us. And we're not on a page, and we're giving mixed signals up here, it makes it hard for them to operate. Are there improvements that need to be done? Absolutely, but we gotta look at our own mess before we can, you know, so I'm with you. Okay.
Okay, uh do we take a vote on this? Okay.
There has to be a consensus.
I'm sorry.
We're talking like Tom's not here, just Tom have anything to say about it?
I, I don't know if Tom, do-
I, I think my role in this is, is to listen.
Yes, okay.
There should be a consensus on the um, on the raise if that's being proposed.
I do, I, one thing I would like to mention, though, Commissioner Asbody mentioned um the um are, are the peers that we've compared against. I don't know what the experience as city managers are at those other jurisdictions. For example, I know Al Minner at Leesburg has been a city manager for a very long time. I think John Drury has as well. Vince Sandersfeld at Mount Dora is new to, to uh being city manager. And I think Claremont's city manager is also brand-new as a city manager. So I don't know, uh again, I know uh Al Minner and John Drury have been city managers for a very long time. I'm not sure about the other jurisdictions.
Yeah, you know, one of the things that I, that I have to say is uh, I don't know, and and this is not to minimize, you know, what the other uh cities are doing, but we have a lot of stuff going on. These three blocks have consumed us for the last four years.
Twenty-three years.
Well, yeah, yeah, they have consumed us. And- this guy has been in the weeds, uh, you know, following our direction, uh, our direction, our misdirection, you know, trying to make things happen. And I think to penalize him because we don't know, excuse the expression, what the hell we're doing half the time. I, I, I just, you know, I just have a problem with it. But, but that's just me. All right, we have to have a consensus?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, Tom wants to say something.
Don't go against what I just said.
Well, I mean, so it, it, it appears there are differing opinions on compensation moving forward. So, I hesitate to bring this up. But, um, one thing that we had talked about as far as the budget process was vehicle allowance. That amount has been the same since at least twenty-fifteen. That was, uh, the amount in Ron's contract previously since at least twenty-fifteen. And so, I had, uh, as part of the budget bu- process, had requested, uh, two hundred dollars additional per month. Uh, again, I know i- it sounds like we have, um, differing opinions on moving forward. But I did, um, I had, that's something I had brought up as part of the budget process.
Thank you, Tom.
You, you know, there's something that bothers me about this process. Everybody has spoken to Tom. If there's something, an area where he needs to grow, where he needs to be better, where he needs to improve, then, um, I think that we should encourage that or give some direction as to how to go about doing it. But, um, and, you know, it, it just seems like we're all, we all have our reasons for what, why we're thinking what we're thinking. But, um, we don't know from each other from day to day what we're all thinking at the same time. Is there a certain area, is there something impending, is there something that's very, very necessary? Uh, Tom needs direction. And, and I, I think that we could do a better job of how we as a group, if there's some area that's really, really, really necessary needing some, 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 uh, improvement in, then that should be the direction. But it's just sort of willy-nilly how we do things and we don't really know, um, what we're, what your concern is, my concern, or anybody else's. And so, it, it makes him, to me, he has no defined, um, areas that he's, he's superseding in or that he needs to do improve, or improve in. And how, how does he determine which direction to go?
I, I think
Go ahead, Joe. In my, in my, um, sit down with Tom, just, and I, I, hopefully you guys did something similar to it. I said, I went through every issue of my concern and I told him what I thought. And then I told him how I thought he could improve in it and what I, what my thoughts were and why. Unfortunately, we didn't have much of an exchange. We had some very limited conversation. I was expecting to have an exchange, but, uh, the HR director said, "This is normally where you just share your thoughts." And that's it. I think I got Tom to talk a little bit, but, um, I did it, you know, with, with, with what, with what it is and, and, uh, the, the, the reason we as a commission don't run this city. We choose, in my opinion and in my understanding, to hire and fire the city manager and, um, and city attorney. I told Tom in, in our, in our talks, I told him, I said, "We are a strong city manager." And one of the things is, he is leading us. He is our leader. He's our CEO in the charter, so specifically our CEO. And we give him direction on things. So, things have to fall on somebody and, and I appreciate you taking responsibility for all the disasters, but it's not you. It's the manager that has to carry it. And the experience is a factor. I think Tom will get there, but we have to keep it in proportion with, with, with the pay.
Well, the other thing, if Gary feels really strongly that he needs to do this in this area, you come and you feel strongly about another area, Willie comes, he's got another area, where, which direction does he go? You know, because if we're passionate about it and he's dealing with five commissioners, how does he know if each one of us have, okay, Tom, this is what I require, what I want, then
It may be contrary to what I want.
That's what I'm saying. So, how does he know which way to go? How do we fix it?
That's a, I got, I got a suggestion, I'm just one of five, but if you're saying that we need better communication and that we've done a bad job on communication, I, I, I don't necessarily agree, disagree with you that maybe we have. So, maybe perhaps we consider tabling this and having a workshop and sit with Tom and exchange all of our concerns so that we can, we can make this town better, we can make the city better, we can have transparency that we're, that we'd like.
I think that, go ahead, Gary, I'm sorry.
But no, but we, but we did that, that's why we had the evaluation, that's why I think all of us, I believe, had a sit down with him.
So, then that's your answer, we've all given him?
I mean, we've, 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 we've done that. I think we all spent considerable amount of time and it was really, I mean, I, for me, it was really good, I believe, really good constructive criticism. I'm not a, I'm not above a raise, I'm just not at five percent. But you only need three. You only need three people.
Yeah, you, you can get, you can pull, you know, each, each commissioner and if there's a, a variation from that, if you want to do a different percentage, you can consider that as well.
My vote is what we gave everybody else on the city staff.
Okay. Gary?
I mean, mine's, mine's less, mine would be two, two and a half.
Emily?
I, I just think there's too much confusion. I would go with what we have, with everybody else. But, but I, I, I want you guys to hear what I'm saying. You're not, you're evaluating him, but we're each telling him something different and it's not fair to, to, I give him my marching artist, you give him yours, you give him yours, five of us. And we don't know what each one is saying.
I think, yeah, and you're absolutely right. And I think that the, for us, that we need to learn is, the consensus is what the majority rules. And if we all say, "This is what we'd like," then that's what happens. And we can't get pissed off, excuse the expression, when it doesn't follow the way we want it to follow, so.
Unfortunately, it goes back to city manager math. Count to three and commission ourselves, you know.
But Mike, I don't think that's a, a, a fair analysis of
Unfortunately, Tom's got to funnel everything, everything that he hears from us, he's got to funnel it through. And he's, and unfortunately, he can't come back to me and said, "This is what George thinks."
Sure, and he never has with, with
And he doesn't.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is when you do city manager math, what you really do say is, "I don't need to hear what Michael Holland has to say about this if he's on the downside of a three-two." I think we should all be together trying to
George, I don't think that's what happens with our city manager. He listens to every one of us. Then he's got to take what he thinks he can live with three people and bring it back to us.
I agree with you one hundred percent.
So, you know, we're just gonna have, we're gonna have to deal with it. I'm not sitting through another workshop on this tight mess. We as a commission, since the first of the year, have dropped, kicked cans down the road. We need to make decisions and move forward finally as a commission. And if we don't start, I'm walking out the door and I'm not sitting here
And I'm walking out behind you.
and not making any decisions anymore. We're gonna make decisions, we're gonna move us forward. If not, it's not worth it to us. Why are we wasting our time?
Because our voters put us here to do that.
Excuse me?
Because the voters asked us to come here.
The voters have asked us to get work done for them. We're not, we're delaying things and we're delaying things and we're delaying things with workshops. We don't get back to it. It's time to go to work. And if we can't do it at a commission meeting, we all need to walk out of here, let the voters of Eustis vote in a new commission. It's happened in our ha- past history where a whole commission walked out of here. And it probably ought to happen again sometime soon if we're not careful.
We need a new evaluation process. That's what, that's what we need. Because doing it this way causes too much confusion. Look what, where we are now. You know, and maybe there should be a criteria that we want to rate him on, everybody give him a rating and it's done, but it's not.
Okay. Five?
What we're giving everybody else.
Five?
I did a review in the point score and I, I thought that's what we look at. And, uh, my score was at one.
Okay, and you were two and a half and I'm at five. Okay.
That's all you knew?
Is that five plus a thousand? Is that five plus a thousand?
Yes.
Okay.
Five plus a thousand, what everyone else gets. Okay, all right, five plus a thousand. Now, the, uh, the car allowance.
That's in the budget.
Was that in the budget?
We already
When we asked the budget, that was there.
All right. Okay, thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have a few items for discussion tonight. That's the following three items. Let's see. You want to go ahead and start with the first one, seven point two?
Please.
Um, thanks. So, we, uh, had previously, um, spoken about some property at a recent meeting. Vice Mayor brought it, this up about having some lots possibly donated for, for use of, of building homes, helping certain, um, nonprofits and things like that. So, what we're looking for tonight is just a kind of a discussion on a policy direction, on how the city would like to handle the sale or transfer of surplus city-owned residential lots. No decision is being made tonight. We're just looking for direction so that we can bring something back to you. So, basically, the purpose of the discussion is so that we can establish a consistent policy for the sale or transfer of surplus residential lots. Looking at both CRA and non-CRA properties, since there are different, um, requirements for CRA properties. Looking to ensure long-term community benefit and preventing speculative resale and to maintain affordability. So, tonight, staff, and when I say staff, I'm also including myself because I prepared this. We're seeking commission, uh, commission direction on what key safeguards and timeframes you would like to see. This is, uh, the legal and policy framework. So, we of course have statutes that allow authority of disposition of surplus property. CRA property can be transferred, but it must align with our redevelopment plan. And, um, the constitution does prohibit gift of public funds, which would essentially also be transferring property. And it does allow for enforceable restrictions to ensure compliance. So, that's where I'm kind of headed as far as giving you the options of what restrictions we should, we can look at. The best practice would be, of course, to, uh, adopt a uniform policy that supports transparency, fairness, and defensibility and makes it, um, easy for not only the public but also staff to, uh, deal with the requests. So, the benefits of adopting a policy, ensuring uniformity and fairness across transactions, provides transparency and public confidence, protects the city and CRA investments, aligns with state housing and one second. Redevelopment, um, best practices, and reduces administrative burden through standard templates. So, here are some of the safeguards I'll go with you, um, over. So, we have the mechanism, purpose, the length, the legal strength, uh, strength as well as staff effort. So, reverter clause, the purpose of that would be that if they do not comply with whether it's occupancy or development within a certain timeframe, the property would revert back to the city. This is high legal strength, five stars. And the staff effort would be moderate on this one. We can also look at deed, deed restrictions that would limit resale and require occupancy for a certain amount of time. And that's a, about four star legal strength and it's low staff effort. We have performance mortgages. These are compliance tied to payment, um, or performance also. For instance, you, there are some cities like Jacksonville, they have, they mortgage the property, but it's a forgivable mortgage that if you comply with the certain, um, you know, development parameters, occupancy requirements, and resale, um, limits, then the mortgage gets forgiven. And so, that, that is a lien on the property, but it's a way to, to kind of keep tabs on it. And, um, this also applies to, if, if we were to sell a property, non-CRA for instance, but, uh, just, uh, surplus property at a very low discount or, you know, the appraisal comes in and we're trying to basically provide encouragement or subsidy and by giving such a discount, then, um, this would also be a way to tie payment, whether it's to the taxes or it's, uh, any kind of restriction that the city's looking for that would be in the best interest for that particular, um, effort. That, performance mortgages are, um, five stars in legal strength and moderate staff effort. We also have the right of first refusal where the city could repurchase the property. The legal strength here is a bit lower, it's on the three star. It's low staff effort because that is part of either the deed or we, you know, we put that in, um, as a condition right on, on public record. So, they'll know, most of these will also be on there, but, um, they would have to come to us in order to sell the property and then we would have to buy it back. But then, the, the benefit here is, depending on the amount, um, we don't know what the market will do. We, well, how do we set that restriction depending on when it happens? So, there's, that'll require a little bit more finessing. Now, the bottom ground lease or a community land trust, these are for long-term community-controlled properties. They're like very strategic, uh, projects. They're high legal strength, but there's a lot of effort for staff. So, in looking at these, um, kind of made a recommendation based on, I think we're, uh, from our last discussion and, and where, what staff can do. So, the direction here would be to, one, um, look at preferred protective mechanisms, whether it's reverter, deed restriction, right of first refusal, prefer timeframes for development and resale restrictions, and whether we'll, to apply different standards for CRA and non-CRA lots. And then with the direction given tonight, we'll prepare a draft policy resolution for your consideration at a future meeting. The recommended policy is to have a tiered approach. This would balance protection and staff manageability. For non-CRA lots, we could look at deed restrictions. Recommendation, what's often done is about five years for resale. So, you cannot sell the property for five years and you have to occupy, owner occupied for that time period. We can incorporate a right of first refusal at that point if they wanted to sell and we wanted to get that back. And, um, so that's essentially a five-year restriction. The CRA lots would work better with a reverter, um, or a performance-based mortgage. That way, um, it's more to ensure compliance with our plan, the CRA plan. We could also have a deed restriction in there based on building time and occupancy. Normally, if the lot is given for homeowner occupancy, twenty-four months is plenty of time to get the home built and, uh, CO'd and ready for occupancy. And then that individual would also be, um, held to occupy the property for at least five year, for five years. And then if they were to try to sell at that point, then we could have a deed restriction in there that this would be affordable housing if we chose to do that or the, the use or purpose of that particular lot would continue. But then, um, we would be able to bring it back if they fail to comply with the restrictions. So, this is essentially the, the recommendation based on where, um, the city lots are and staff is.
Okay. So, um, so as a mortgage professional, I know some of these are going to be really hard to get a, a, a mortgage for. Do you have any experience in, with that? Most, most of these houses, most of these houses will have a, will have, will have a mortgage after, after they're built, so.
These would be, uh, so these mortgages, the performance ones, would be, uh, subordinate mortgages. But they would just be a lien on the property, so they can't just dispose of it without us being involved. And I think the, the goal is to make sure that the city is informed of what's going on with the properties as, you know, you don't want to dispose of something and it's gone, they flip it and then
Right.
um, they go and sell it in the private market. So, it wouldn't, we would be taking a, um, a secondary position to allow for the bank to have a primary in, in that instance, um, to allow for them to get financing. Do you have any other thoughts, Commissioner? And, and again, this is just a discussion.
Right.
So, what I would be recommending is this, right? So, we, um, we'll want to coordinate for CRA properties that anything we do is consistent with the plan. We would have a draft surplus property resolution, a po- property, policy resolution that complies with the Florida statute. We'd bring it back to you for consideration and that, in that, we would develop standardized templates so you could look at so you could look at what a deed restriction, um, would be, the reverter, if we do that, the, the mortgage that, um, we discussed earlier, um, kind of building those parameters. But we're really looking at, are we gonna do a five-year, the restrictions, are we looking at five years? And if we're good with the twenty-four months for building, um, the lot for occupancy? So, it's, it's still a work in progress, but, and I'm, and I'm happy to build more on it, but it's just to kind of give you an idea of what the enforcement mechanisms would be. And, um, by developing templates that are satisfactory to all of you, then it would make it, um, definitely easier for staff just to have that to work off of, and then essentially, as a request come through and it's approved by commission, you know which restriction you want to enforce for this one, and they'll already have that. Thoughts, questions?
Questions?
No, it's an improvement over what happened in the past, where people are still sitting on those lots and nothing's ever been built on them.
Yeah.
And they're just holding on to them, and I, I think this is...
I'm still...
Very much needed.
I, I, I totally agree with you on that, uh, but I'm still...
If you'd like Vice Mayor, if you wanted to be the point, if the commission is okay with it,
Yeah.
For you to be the point person, since you have the real estate experience for us to work on, on...
Yeah.
What that looks like, and then bring it back to you, just like we did to chicken ordinance, uh, with Commissioner Asbody.
Because I'm worried, I'm worried about how some of these will, might be a challenge for, for some of the loan programs out there with, uh, subordinate mortgages, and so, yes, I would, I now would be more than happy to, to help with that.
Thanks Gary.
Yep.
Okay. So, do we have, uh, consensus to kind of...
Yes.
Work on all that?
Yeah.
And then, I can work with the Vice Mayor as the point person? Okay, great. Alright, the next one.
Sasha, the, the next two.
Yes.
Aren't we governed by the state of Florida?
Uh, yes, we are.
Yeah.
Yes, we are. A lot of things we're governed by the state of Florida. Um, and, and I, these are quicker, I just, uh, to be, to be frank, given, uh, what transpired with the discussion on the developer one-on-one meetings, I, um, it, in considering the process, um, speaking with, uh, the administration, speaking with the mayor, the idea is to bring to you for discussion certain items before we just put them on the agenda to avoid, um, you know, what happened. So, whether it's to comply with the law or not, I mean, sometimes we won't go through this because we're, I'll be preparing ordinances that are just absolutely required, and there's not anything really to discuss, but this is more to give you information of what's coming, or what you'll, you'll be expected to see. I don't, I mean, I don't expect that you'll say no to these, um, but you could.
I, I had a, I looked at one nineteen, i- it's just wordy.
I know, I have a presentation.
Yeah, yeah, and so, it just seems to me, I need to know more, I feel better knowing more about...
Yeah.
Why we would have to do this particular thing.
Yes, well, I, I have, I have some more information. Ready? Okay. So, um, this is a public records exemption request form and procedures.
Okay, can I add one thing? I, I, I wanted to follow up on what Michael said. Everything, everything in here has already been dictated by the legislature. And the legislature has gone over it and over it and over it consistently, and I think they do a great job. And for us to create, uh, anything else other than that, with where our city is and the things that we need to do, um, I, 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 I don't, I don't know where this is coming from. I don't really understand that. I have not had a chance to look at these senate bills and read all this, uh, but, you know, I, I, I would like...
Yeah.
I would like to see us, um, give us more opportunity for me to do some research and do some stuff on this. I'd like to see us, uh, table this for now. I'd like, I'd move to table this.
It's a discussion item, there's no, there's no decision being made tonight.
And I would table to move to discuss, to, uh, table the discussion till at least I can get a chance to read some of the stuff myself and understand it, uh, even though I don't really, I agree with, with, um, Michael.
Well, the issue is, you know, we have, this is man, this is supported by Florida state law, and, um, we don't have policies in place for certain items, and this is also to provide guidance, not only for, for staff and the public.
So, I would like to table this for now, and give me a chance to do some research, and perhaps, I don't want to say this because I don't want to get Michael mad at me, perhaps a workshop on it or a table, but I, I need, I'm happy with what the legislature has done, uh, I think they do a great job. And at this point, I, I can't, I'm not prepared to go through and, and deal with this now, so I would make a, um, suggestion, a move, a motion. I don't know what it is to table this, seven point three and seven point four.
Is, is, are these, sorry, are these, are, were you done George? Yeah, are, are these new laws?
There's an expansion of, um, Senate Bill two sixty-eight, so the...
Number seven point three.
It's, it's, uh, if I may at least go through the presentation, and then you can choose to discuss.
I would, I would, I'm moving, I have a, a, a move or a, uh, word forward to table this, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to be heard on that, or I'd like you to poll the, the commission.
Okay, uh, I'm polling, um, Mike?
I'm good with tabling it because I think state law supersedes everything.
Like I was saying, I, like I say, I didn't have really a, a, a chance to really dive into this as well, and... There's a lot of things I'd like to understand first, so, yeah, I'm, 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 I would like to table it too. Emily?
I was overwhelmed when I looked at one nineteen, so, I, I, I'd like to, you know, us to deep dive into it.
I will be frank, this is for the benefit of staff, is, because they, they don't have a form that they can work off of to read off what the exemptions are, and this bill expands a family member...
Mr. Mayor, we, we put out, and I think you did a polling, um, give us a chance to, to re, look at this as we've asked and as we voted.
Please continue what you were saying Sasha.
The bill expanded to family members to be able to come to the city and say, "I'm married to," or "I am the daughter of," or "The son of, a police officer," um, anyone that works for the city, and "I would like my information to be protected from disclosure." It's not something that, um, you know, previously was allowed. And that involves disclosure of daycare locations and, uh, personal data, so...
You're talking about seven point three right now?
Yes, that's the whole point of presenting this, is because, um, staff, when they come to request, they have to do it, there has to be a form that they can fill out and say, "I qualify based on the fact that I, you know, my father, or my husband, or, you know, whomever, works for the city, and I would like my information exempted." So, it's really to protect the individuals as they come in. There's, there's nothing, um, it's, it's completely consistent with what two sixty-eight is. It just expanded the protections, and it's to enable, uh, you know, the clerk, when she gets a request, to have a form that they can fill out and comply, and she can confirm that the exemption, because it is very lengthy, which exemption applies to this individual, it would facilitate that greatly. Right now, we do not have form.
And do other, do other municipalities have a form?
Yes, they do.
So, why are we so far behind getting this one?
It just, this is a, a, a new thing now because of what happened with...
Like I said, that we, the, the agenda came out really late on Friday, I mean, really late, um, and I tried to look into this. It's a lot of, I mean, it's a lot of legal, a lot of legal stuff, and, I mean, I, I would just like to have a little bit more time to look at it first, that's all I'm saying. Alright, uh, may I, what did you say Emily?
I, I, I was overwhelmed with it too, I'd like to...
I, I'm okay with it coming back in two weeks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, do, are you good for two weeks? Is two weeks enough time?
Depends on what we find in there. I would like to table it for now, let us look at it, and then we'll see if we agree to bring it back when we're ready.
Bring it back in two weeks.
Okay. Same for seven point four?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know that that might be sufficient. Could we ask, uh, can we table the, uh, commission? We need to probably take some time, probably meet with, uh, attorney and, and get some understanding of all this so that we can do a diligent...
I think two weeks is enough time. Two weeks. Okay.
But in two weeks, you'd like me to bring this back for presentation?
Yes.
Back under discussion?
Discussion, please.
Okay. And seven point four as well?
Yes.
And seven point four, we're talking about, including that in there too, yeah, okay.
Okay, alright. Okay, next up, future agenda items, uh, Mike?
Congratulations to the fire department, what a great presentation tonight, uh, Chief Capri. Congratulations to our police department. Both of those agencies are some of the best in central Florida, and I appreciate the hard work that the, uh, both chiefs are doing and the command staffs at both of those organizations, just outstanding. Everywhere I go, I'm proud. Every League of Cities meeting that I step into, I hear about your organizations, and I'm very proud of that. So, thank you so much. Halloween's coming up, please watch out for our kids, make sure that they're, stay safe. I know that Sam has a, uh, program coming up, uh, is it this, this Saturday, Sam? Six to...
Six to nine.
Six to nine, out at Harbor Park? Excellent. And I think Chief Capri probably wants to talk about, um, our officer that we, uh, retired officer that we lost, so I'd give him some time to do that, if that's okay.
I'll call you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll call him.
That's all I've got, Mayor.
Okay, Emily?
I don't have anything right now, but I will say that it seems like wherever there are awards or wherever Eustis, City of Eustis is mentioned, that we bring back hardware, and everybody knows who we are, and I'm proud of that.
Okay. Alright, thank you, Gary. Uh, yeah, a couple of things, um, you know, speaking of, of the agenda being really late on Friday, and we've all had this discussion now about not, not having, is there, you know, I'm just, is there a way to get the agenda out on Thursday instead of Friday? And the reason being, when we get it on Friday, we can't, staff's already gone, they're gone for the weekend. And it, it is, I mean, we do lose, we do lose a day trying to, you know, trying to get, you know, these answers once, you know, we help probably maybe solve some of these things. It's just an idea, it's, um, it's, you know, we really only have three days, three business days, two before the meetings. Okay. We'll have Tom address that. Okay. Okay, anything else? Yeah, and, um, I'd like, I'd like to just have a discussion on commissioners going to conferences. I am going to one next week. It's not a conference that, that we're all going to, and I haven't been to any other conferences this year. So, I'd like to go to this conference and then be reimbursed for some of the travel. But Tom, Tom suggested I had to poll the commission, um, for that. I, I just chose to go to this conference as opposed to the other conferences that we've had already this year. The money's been budgeted for commissioners to go to conferences, I'm just choosing to go to this one. Conference? It's the one in, the one in Japan, the SUSE, the Southeastern, Southeastern States Japanese Association Conference. We're meeting with some companies that are interested in Lake County.
How much are you thinking that entails of roughly, a range?
Um, I, I mean, I don't have an exact figure, um...
What's in the budget?
I, I, Tom, Tom would have to help me on that.
What's in the budget, Tom?
So, the, um, the travel that we budget for each commissioner includes the, uh, annual League of Cities Conference, uh, which we budget, uh, I believe, two thousand dollars per commissioner for that. And then, the, um, the legislative days, uh, the League of Cities Tallahassee trip, uh, which I think we budget at fifteen hundred dollars per commissioner. Uh, we do also budget for Florida Redevelopment Association, but that's in the CRA budget versus the, the others I mentioned are in the general fund commission budget. And then, we budget for, uh, various, uh, chamber breakfasts, uh, and various other, uh, smaller and more local events. So, uh, definitely thirty-five hundred dollars per commissioner, and then some smaller amounts.
But it's designated?
I'm sorry?
It's designated for those particular?
It, the, uh, it is in a larger travel and per diem line item, but the sub items say League of Cities and Tallahassee. So, that's, it appears in the budget in those sub lines. And then, we, we also, uh, budget for various, like, uh, um, the sheriff's gala, and, uh, we budget for other, um, events, uh, again, smaller amounts for various events. Give some more comments, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Uh, yeah. I mean, this is...
Thirty, thirty-five hundred, or, or whatever?
It'll not be that much.
Okay, it won't be that much, but whatever, that was what allocated for his travel. I didn't go, I don't think anybody went to the last one, uh, the last week or something, whatever that was.
Uh, that was the Florida Redevelopment Association.
This is just my thought. If anybody, any one of these commissioners, and really even staff that might be, even Miranda, or Tom, or Al, want to go travel across the country through another time zone to try to find something that helps the city, that's a small price to pay. We're dishing out eighty-five thousand dollar move money for this guy, thirty-five thousand to do this, twenty thousand to match this stuff. We got a vice mayor of our town who's willing to go across the country and wave our flag, no matter what, I'm a big economic development guy, I can't... What's the, the squeeze worth the juice? Um, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, I, I won't go. I'm not interested in going because it's just too much, too far, my time and everything, but I, I'm, I'm okay with thirty-five hundred, all the things that we do in a twenty-five million dollar operating budget, and it's budgeted in. I'm, I'm, I'm all for it, I'm, I really, I thank you for going.
Well, I mean, we, we all have our initiatives.
We do.
And, you know, we all have certain things that we're, and economic development for me is one, is top, is top of my list right now, so... If the money's already there, I'm not asking for more money, I'm just asking for the money that's already there that I haven't used for any of the other conferences. Why haven't you gone to any of the other conferences? Mainly because of work. Okay. Emily?
I guess, I feel like we, there's so much that we need to, like, when we go to the conferences, we're limited. If, if only two of us go, if only three of us go, as to the information we bring, we, we bring back, ordinarily, in the past, we've all gone together, one take this area, one take this area, one take this area, and we all come back with a load of information. I guess I have to ask, you, you talk about economic benefits, but what is it really going to do for the City of Eustis? And I remember, um, the, the idea about Sister City, um, that coming up too. And I, I guess I'm just wondering how beneficial or what, what is it really gonna do for us as compared to going to conferences and learning new things about this, in the state of Florida? That's just the only question I have, that's what I'm, I'm asking.
How, how beneficial were the other conferences that we went to?
We?
No, the, the area, everyone else went to already this year.
Yeah.
How beneficial were those?
I, I felt that they were the ones I went to, and I didn't go to the last one.
Emily, you can't object, one at a time, one at a time. There's no way you can objectively say those, those conferences were not that good for the city as opposed to this conference is not that good. There's no objective measure whatsoever you can put on that.
But I'm only stating what I got out of it, and what I think that we, when we go to those, that we should go and we, we learn new things. I don't know, you're sound telling, actually, when you said it, you said, "I want to go to a conference." And I hear a lot of things, I'm not, I'm not, Gary, I'm not opposing, I'm just asking questions.
You know, I support, I support everyone, I, I support everyone, others initiative. I support American Bloom. Willie, I support you with Panther Pride and, and education. Michael, you, you know, you're big on the cemetery right now. George, you're, uh, you know, UCF and, and, uh, and Mega, and you guys are gonna sta- stand here and say, "I can't have a little bit of money to go to help, to help the city?" I think what it is, is we have... No, it's personal was what it's become. Yes, it has, Willie.
No, it's not.
It, it is, it's become personal up here, and I'll tell you what, I am not the only one in the season. It's personal. I, what I will say is, we have no idea what you're talking about.
Exactly.
All you say is a conference, we don't know what you're doing. You, you went, you went down to Fort Lauderdale with the chief, I don't know what, I don't know what went on down there. It wasn't thirty-five hundred dollars. It's money that's already budgeted though. Emily, did you get reimbursed for... It's money that's already budgeted though. Emily, did you get reimbursed for American Bloom to go up there?
No, I didn't get reimbursed.
You didn't get reimbursed for anything for the city?
No, I did not. Now, I got my fare paid and I got my registration paid. But, but Gary, Gary, here's the thing. Here's what's bothering me. When we, you present something to us, but when we ask you questions, you get so defensive and you get so hostile towards us.
That's the only reason why it's, I'm being defensive. And.
I think we gotta go back to the.
Hold on, let him finish, please.
And, and, yeah.
Gary, let me ask you something.
That's fine.
Why don't you just tell us what you're going for? That's what we need to know. You haven't told us yet.
It's economic development. We're going, I'm going over there to meet with some companies.
But isn't that Al's job?
I think Al should go too, and we should pay for that.
Okay. Willie, just, 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 just poll. It's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm okay.
Thirty-five hundred dollars to a commissioner's initiative to go do the economic development across the other side of the country? I'm, I'm, I gotta say thank you.
If you wanted, if you wanted an itinerary, I mean, if that, that would've made a difference, I would've, I would've had, I would've had one. I would've had one prepared.
When is this, uh, when is this event?
It's, um, it's, uh, Monday and Tuesday next week.
I was gonna say, we could do a workshop, but Michael would get upset with me.
No, it's okay. Just, no, it's.
George, if you can hear though in that workshop crap at me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna walk out of here and I'm not gonna stay.
Everybody. Come on, this, this, this is about me right now. No, really. I mean, it's fine. I mean, everybody, everybody's had their, everyone's had their opinion, so it's fine. Let's just, you know, let's just.
Okay, uh.
Just, just poll.
What do you wanna do, Em?
I am not going to comment.
Okay, Mike?
Truthfully, if we'd have known more about it, if, if I'd have had further advance notice, I mean, this just didn't come up. I don't, I don't personally at this point see where it benefits the people of this city. Um, I've got people, we've got people, residents that can't afford to go across the, the county line. So, no, I, I'm not in favor of it right now. If, if we'd have had more information, more planning time, I, we could've looked at it.
George?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, if you guys wanna, uh, if we can ask, if you feel like it would be more informative to you, we can maybe ask Gary to forward information on the, on the event and the site and, and all of that. I just can't believe we're spending that much time over thirty-five hundred dollars on, but, um.
We spent this much time on lists, so.
Have we? Then shame on us. Uh, I think.
Alright, let him finish.
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I think, I hope, you know, I, I had an example, I saw an example, um, with, with us at the Mega Workplace where they reached out to a Czechoslovakian company that honestly, I didn't think it was anything worth our time. And, uh, it's, it's led to a, a, a facility, an office, and now a, um, assembly and, and whatever Opticon is going to be doing. So, sometimes you knock on doors as a salesman. I mean, Al, how many people do you talk to before you get one person? It's not easy. So, international is now favorable because of some of the trade stuff and everything. So, yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with thirty-five hundred dollars for that.
I wanna say, I just wanted to say that, I said this to, to someone before, it's not what, but how. And when we ask questions and we do this, I would, I would hope that we, as a commission, can respond to each other in a way that we give information and do it in a, not, not be so angry and, and hostile about it. That's all I wanna know. That's all, I just ask questions and share with us. Let us know. I mean, but when it becomes a yelling contest and talking over anybody, we're not gonna get anything done. So, I'm done with it and I, I, I can conclude. I'm finished. I'm done.
May I make a suggestion?
I'm passionate about it. Did you ask, didn't you tell us about this before? Uh, did you tune out already? Didn't you tell us about this?
No, that was, that was about meeting with the general consul in Miami. And I actually do have the, uh, I actually do have the itinerary here if, uh, anybody wanted to see it.
Sasha?
Yeah, if I just wanna make a suggestion. If, um, since this is Monday, Tuesday, that's coming up, right? Um, possibly consider looking at, uh, making an adjustment to the travel policy. I mean, our charter does have some restrictions on that, but we can, if, if with more information, there is a finding of public benefit, there could be reimbursement and then just a reallocation of those funds as, as reimbursement.
I, I notified Tom of this over, over a week, over.
Uh, well, it does have to be in public discussion. That's the issue that, so, you know, you'll go to the conference and then you can inform the commission of the public benefit. And if they're all in agreement, we can do the reimbursement component. Because we don't have, um, under the charter, I don't believe that there's a, a way to just do essentially, uh, general travel. Like, everything is either registration fees paid, there has to be a, a city business related because it is expanding public funds. So, if we can have this discussion again with more information and you have the commission on board, we can just do a reallocation of, and do a budget amendment to, to move that over and get you that, um, that reimbursement. I think it's just a matter of them needing more information. So, I think we can still, I'm just offering that as a, a way to kind of get you.
Appreciate that, yeah, sure.
Alright, anything else?
Okay, we heard from everyone but you, Mr. Mayor?
Oh.
Well, we're not done.
Oh.
No, on the, on the, uh.
Oh, the travel.
Done with.
Oh, you're done? Okay. Yeah, I, um, yeah, I think I, I'd want more information. Um, you know, three days before.
It wasn't three days before. I, I asked Tom about this. Tom, when did I email you about this?
Uh, early last week.
Yes.
But it, but it has to be, it has to be talked about in public. That's the problem.
We're in public now.
Okay.
I mean, I can't email you directly. Go ahead. Sorry, I'm sorry, sir.
So, are we directing her, uh, the, the city attorney to, to prepare something else? I hope it doesn't cost more than, okay.
No, I'm okay. It's fine.
It was a suggestion on how to handle this for, for the next meeting since it's coming up.
Are you, are you open to that? Start a suggestion.
I mean, I, I don't know why I have to be singled out to.
Oh, my God.
I'm, I'm not, not really. I, I honestly, that's what, Willie.
I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna tell you this. Every time.
I respect you.
Go ahead, go ahead. And then I'll tell you what I have to say. Go ahead.
I respect you when, when, when you're talking. I, I don't know why, I'm the only commissioner up here that has to, that has to ask for travel money.
You know, I, 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 wh- what I will say is that every time, and don't take this the wrong way. Every time that something goes against you, you play the victim. And you do. And it's not that case. It's, it's, it's not the case. There's a certain way to do things. So, uh, are you open to, uh, uh, what Sasha said?
Just coming back after your trip and updating commission, if, if they find, you know, again, just a discussion, public benefit, and then there could be a readjustment to reimburse you.
Alright, okay. Alright, Tom? Oh, I'm sorry. Chief, did you come up, please? Talk about Phil.
Uh, on Oct-, uh, can you hear me?
Yeah.
On October eighteenth, we lost, uh, retired Sergeant Bill Livingston. He passed away after a courageous battle with cancer. And, uh, Phil, we, we honored him here, I believe, a month and a half ago for our first annual, um, legacy award. And, uh, myself and Elena Passick went to his house on the sixteenth to talk to him because he went to hospice care. And, uh, it's pretty tough when you're sitting in somebody's house and they're asking you to plan your funeral, their funeral. And, uh, it was emotional. I usually don't get choked up on things, but it, it definitely hit me pretty hard. Uh, I didn't think it would happen that fast. So, he, he asked for some things for his send-off, his funeral. And I, I gave him my word and we're gonna, we're gonna do that. So, the funeral is gonna be Monday, uh, the twenty-seventh at Hardin Pauli at ten o'clock, uh, is the viewing, the viewing. And then eleven o'clock will be a celebration of life there. Uh, I don't know how long it's gonna last. Uh, Pastor Renee is officiating. The family requested her. Uh, and then about, hopefully, well, around noon or whatever. I don't know what time we're done with the service. We're gonna, uh, do a procession to the, uh, I, I don't know the name of the, the cemetery over here by, uh, if you go north on nineteen.
Lakeside Memory Gardens.
Lake, what's it?
Lakeside.
Lakeside Memorial Gardens is where we'll have the, uh, he asked for, uh, police officers and, and fire to do the, uh, uh, pallbearers. So, uh, I would like, if, if the commission could show up, it's kinda important. Uh, I mean, you know, funeral's a must, wedding's option. So, uh, I'd really appreciate it if, if, if you all show up and pay your respects if you're in town.
What time was that again?
Uh, ten o'clock in the morning. It's, it's, it's on our Facebook page.
Yeah.
Please keep his family and your thoughts and prayers. Uh, I gotta tell you, the, the Eustis Police Department really stepped up. Uh, the retirees, everybody, stop bringing food for the family. And, uh, it, it's tough. This job's tough as it is. And then, and then, you know, you retire and you get to, what, get four years of your life to retire? You gotta put up with all the stuff that you gotta deal with and, uh, the pressures and the stress of the job. So, it's just, uh, it just, it just sucks. So, uh, cancer sucks. And I feel sorry for anybody that goes do that. And I hope one day they find a cure for that disease. So, uh, thank you.
Thanks, Chief. Thanks, Chief. Tom?
Uh, yes, a couple of things. Uh, we, uh, have engaged.
Hold on a minute, Tom.
Sure.
George?
I've, I've had, there's a little thing going around downtown with concern about parking. And I'm getting some of the business owners, uh, started one with one and now it's expanded to three or four and now five. Concerned about, and this is probably a chief's, uh, input thing, concerned about people parking all day, sometimes for days and days, in front of our businesses. And it, it, it's, it's, I can't tell you how many times I've come through town and then just said, "Um, let's go." Now, Mount Door has got that reputation, unfortunately, but can we find a way to not have cars parked there, especially by, I, I have in my leases down there that no employee, uh, can park there, to leave it open for customers. And, uh, we, we haven't even grown the next big growth and we, we're having that. So, it would be nice to listen to our businesses. I'm, Daniel's here, I guess. Uh, I don't know if he has a thought on that. But, uh, we talked once about it, Chief, and you said something about parking for two hours or putting up signs. Somebody said, I can't remember exactly.
Uh, let me interrupt. Chief and I are meeting with people downtown tomorrow about this. So, so thanks.
I mean, but I think, I think the big challenge is that there's, there's, there's apartments and residents above all these, all these, uh, all these storefronts.
And there's public parking though, too, for them. I've asked them, and I have apartment people and they need to park in, in, in the public parking.
That's, I mean, that's, that's gonna be the real challenge.
Yeah. I think one of the big problems, I think you were bringing it up, George, is that we have a lot of business owners that are parking, uh, you know, in, in customer parking spots. And they're there all day. Uh, so, I had some people talk to me and the chief and I are gonna meet with them tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you. What else?
Um, I believe, uh, I believe that, yeah, Aaron's thing is coming up. Um, I, I'll let you talk about that if, if you like. Uh, it's still, it still hurts um, our community. You can still drive by there and you could see the skid marks and you could see the scraping and you could see where he was hit. And you could see all this, not to get into the emotional side of it all, but, uh, it's, it's, it's something. I've reached out to the family. I continue to. I encourage my fellow commissioners. I'm sure they all have. I don't even think I have to say that. We have that kind of good-hearted commissioners, uh, to keep doing that. But, um, other than, other than, other than that, I, I didn't plan on commenting about this, but today was a little bit more rougher than some of the previous days. But I know we're all trying to do better and we're passionate about what we believe. And I believe that every one of these commissioners up here have the cities in their heart. And I challenge myself every meeting to try to be better and I think we are. And, uh, let's not lose the energy in there and, and, uh, and, and carry forward to make Eustis and leave Eustis better than it was when we came in. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, George. Uh, Tom?
Yes, uh, we have engaged, uh, Dr. Levy. Um, uh, Dr. Levy was here, met with, um, a commissioner and, um, members of the leadership team. Uh, we need to schedule, uh, another visit, uh, where we can, uh, get with the commissioners that he has not met with, uh, one-on-one yet. And then we also, um, Dr. Levy is traveling as we approach the Thanksgiving holiday. So, we are not gonna get a workshop in before Thanksgiving, uh, but I'm now working with him to identify a date, uh, in, uh, early December. So, I'll be, um, probably sending a doodle poll out, trying to get something set up for that. Uh, but we need to, before we can do that, we need to schedule the one-on-one sessions. So, I'll be working with you, uh, to get those scheduled. Um, also, uh, we are working through a process, uh, with the state, uh, called the EIR or the Evaluation and Appraisal Report. Uh, that is a process where we, uh, take a look at, evaluate and modify our comprehensive plan. Uh, that has gotten more complicated with the, uh, introduction of Senate Bill one eighty. And so, we are working with, uh, consultants, uh, to move through that process. I bring it up because we are approaching some deadlines with the state on our ear, but at the same time, we're getting some resistance from this, not resistance, but we're running into delays because of Senate Bill one eighty. And so, I'm letting you know that, uh, we are working on it. We've engaged a consultant to help us through that process. And I will be getting you more information because it may affect our ability to approve some comprehensive plan amendments and annexations moving forward. And so, more information to come on that. And then, um, the final thing, uh, I want to thank everyone for the time that they've put into, uh, my performance evaluation. Uh, I did get good information. Uh, I will, uh, work on, uh, items that have been, have been identified uh, by the commissioners. And I, I wanna thank you because you, um, you all serve a dual role. Uh, well, you serve many roles, but specifically, you serve a dual role in that you are an employer uh, and you have to provide, um, benefits and salaries, not just to me, but to all of our employees. And so, you're an employer, but you're also a steward of taxpayer dollars. And so, I just want you to know that I appreciate, uh, the, um, the complications of serving those dual roles and, uh, thank you for everything you do. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Tom. And thank you for what you do. Madam, it's your turn.
Yes, I have a few updates for you. Uh, first with the, uh, community center parcel with, uh, for the CRA disposition. So, we did get a revised title commitment. Um, it shows that the city does hold fee simple, clear title to the property. It is no longer subject to any deed restrictions or reverter clauses, um, that were present in, um, you know, prior deeds, but we were able to get the probate file and through that, get that clearance um, with the Old Republic Title Commitment. Um, so, we are able to move forward with the existing legal description, which is the old legal description. Because the title insurer did recommend a new boundary survey, which, um, to, to be accurate, we did look at some costs and, um, the, they're, they're pretty high. So, um, it's not required for closing. So, the idea is for, for us to be able to move forward with this. Um, we would recommend that the buyer, that whoever ends up getting the property, uh, based on, uh, the city's determination would obtain and pay for their survey, just to secure that they have exact delineations of, of what comes with that conveyance. Um, that way, it's, uh, they would be doing so, so that they're protected because if they choose not to, it's at their own risk. Um, they would presume any, they would assume any liability if, uh, um, there's any issues with titles later on, um, based on, on the boundary survey. So, but this would save, um, an unnecessary expense for the city. So, I just wanted to, um, let you know about that. So, that would be included in the publication um, to let them know that this is, i- i- it's a concern, but, you know, that's something that they would have to consider uh, in making that proposal. Uh, I know that we'll be doing the, um, Notice of Intent to Dispose as well as the RFP. It'll have all of that, that, you know, the property description, let them know about the survey, um, invitation for the proposals. They'll have to also indicate why their proposal serves public purpose and provide financial feasibility documentation. Um, I think staff is, uh, working through the preparation of the RFP and it, just to make sure that everything goes out. I think staff is, uh, working through the preparation of the RFP and it, just to make sure that everything goes out concurrently. But we would, I believe the intention is to bring it to you so that you could see the contents of it and you're okay with what is going out, um, and you can see the full breadth of what it is that we're requiring, um, for the applicants to submit. And that way, once it's out, you can also, um, then determine how you wanna handle the process of evaluation, whether it's through a committee, whether you wanna review all of them, um, depending on how many submissions we get, et cetera. But that's kind of where we are now.
Will that be done this year?
Go ahead.
Will that be done this year?
We're just waiting on getting, um, the language ready, so we'll probably be able to, Tom, do you think maybe next?
We, we've been working on it this whole time and we are, uh, finalizing it right now. I mean, we could potentially have it on the agenda at the next meeting.
My, my concern is we don't have a plan for our community center. And I think that if we put it out there, that property will probably go quicker than, uh, any other property that we.
But we don't, I mean, we don't have to, we get, we get solicitation, but we don't have to do any of them.
Yeah, that, yeah.
I mean, it's just, I mean, and she's done some great work on this, um, but we have lost a, a little bit of time trying to figure out, you know, um, and, and do we really need to okay the advertising? I thought we already did that. I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna understand all the language in that.
Okay, I, I, I thought you wanted to be more, I mean, uh, it's really up to you.
But I'm just, I mean, I'm just, I'm just, this is discussion. I mean, I'm not gonna know all the language in the, in the RFP, do we need to?
We, yeah, generally they don't come before commission, but, um.
So, so the RFP, explain that. I mean, wh- what's our intent?
Well, it's just an essentially, we're putting out there that there's a notice of, of intent to dispose of public property. And if someone is interested, they'd be submitting their proposal for how they wanna develop that property to serve the public purpose of the city and, um, show a number of things, but essentially, um, also that they have financial feasibility to do it, what kind of timing they're looking at. So it's, it, there's a lot of information that goes into it, because you wanna make sure that whatever project you end up choosing, if you choose to select one, and you don't necessarily have to, but, um, that that's actually a good fit for the community, that that's gonna be a, a good disposal of the property. Um, we're not, um, you know, because of the fact that it's, it is a CRA property, it's also a pretty, um, good location. You know, there could be a lot of interest, um, so it's.
So it's an RFP for projects pertaining to that piece of property.
Yes, for them to submit proposals. Mm-hmm. But we, it's also, um, incumbent on the city and, and for your evaluation to make sure, again, that the project is a good fit, that it's going to be, uh, completed within a reasonable time, based on what they propose, that it's, um, uh, financially feasible for it to act, for it to not only get built but operate during, for a certain amount of time. Um, so there's a, a lot to consider there. So normally a committee's established when these come in and, um, kind of sort through if there's more than one. And then, uh, that gets presented to you all and then you, you, you know, we can't really sign a contract or anything for conveyance until there's an evaluation of all of this, because you have to make a finding that this, this disposal of property would be in the city's best interest.
And we, and when we do that, we also have to talk about what, how we're gonna do without the community center.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the transition part, we gotta build that into it also. I mean, that's something else we need to be planning on.
Yeah, when they pick somebody, I guess, or top, whatever. Is it required by law to do an RFP for that property?
We just asked this before, it's not required, it's an additional, um, recommendation. And I think the consensus was from commission to proceed with that protection.
Yeah, but it's not required by law, okay.
The, the thirty-day advertisement is required by one sixty-three point three eight oh.
That's the minimum, but there's feasible, I mean, it's not gonna be possible to gather all that information and do an evaluation of the financials and all of that in thirty days. That's just a time for people to respond and get their, their data in. So that's a, it'll all go out concurrently, so it just allows you to have more opportunity to get and, and kind of put, you know, give more notice to the public.
What are we doing with the RF, the unsolicited that we got? Are we?
They will be able to read, to submit an application once, um, the Notice of Intent goes out. That's why, given, um.
We won't vote on that, we won't hear it.
The city's not obligated to respond. Um, I believe you guys got, got a copy of the letter?
Yeah.
That was submitted to, um, Attorney Absaal and that, um, there's no obligation.
No need to respond, okay.
But they're welcome to apply. And I did tell Attorney Absaal that once we were ready to proceed, because we were clearing up the title of concern that came up, um, that I would let him know when that was gonna be published so that his clients could submit an application as well.
Okay. So whenever somebody makes an unsolicited, we have no obligation to respond?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anything else on that? So do you want it to come back to you? Because I think that's also something Tom would need to know.
What exactly are you talking about?
The, the, the content of, uh, what we're gonna put out there, the notice and the RFP, as far as what, what all is going out.
You're looking it over?
Yes, I will be looking it over.
And you're looking it over?
Yes.
I would like to see it just for transparency, a copy of it, so that if we could share anything in there and thoughts, it will help us so that when the people do come forward, she knows kind of a little idea that we, we have an input and, and, uh, and put it out there. And I'd also like to know how it would be advertised, when, where? And when the, when it would be, uh, opened up the, uh, responses and that it be done in public.
Okay, here it is.
Well, we, if, if there's a consensus to do that, then we will bring it back. Tom thinks we could have it ready by next meeting?
Yeah, that would be the plan.
We'll put it on later, okay?
Alright.
Alright, the, two more. I have two more things to talk about, I know. Today I got to talk a lot. Um, just a quick update on the EV charging stations. I know you called, Ben, um, was here earlier. Uh, he submitted to us a draft, um, contract to, to look over and I've, I've looked at it. Um, we're going to need to revise it and negotiate it with him, so I, I will be getting, um, some of my edits, hopefully, next week, so we can bring it back to you as soon as possible. The way it's currently written, um, there's a lot of control for the vendor, uh, especially with termination rights and it limits flexibility for the city. We don't have clear performance standards and I wanna make sure that if they're going to have control, they're servicing, um, the units quickly and so that the, the public is essentially, um, you know, getting the benefit of us giving that exclusive location. Another aspect of it is, it is an exclusivity agreement, so I would, I would like to see it narrowed to the locations that he mentioned or where we actually have them, so that we can also have the opportunity, if we wanna expand, to include, um, other providers in other locations, if, if, we kind of limit the scope of that. So, um, yeah, that's essentially where we are, um, with that. And my last update, um, is Huddle forty-four, if you guys remember this one? So we have, uh, received notification that, uh, two of the nearby property owners did file a lawsuit with, uh, Lake County. They had reached out to our, uh, Development Services, uh, seeking an appellate process for the approval of, uh, Resolution twenty-five fifty-five, which was the one that granted approval of the site plan with waivers for the, um, I think it was the drive-through. And, um, wrote the commercial project over on SR forty-four B. Uh, so we do not have an appellate process for that, because that is, um, when you make it that determination, it's, it's final. I mean, it's made by the commission. So, um, we did correspond with the, um, the individual and advise him that he would need to seek recourse with the court through a petition for writ of certiorari, which has been done, there's a timeframe on that. Um, they went ahead and filed that and, um, what they're alleging is that the city did not comply with certain provisions of the Land Development Code. There are no damages being sought, it's essentially a review of the commission's decision. So the court has, it's part of the process, every time we get these, uh, requests sent, they do a, a review to see if there's compliance with, um, the requirements of what the petition has, as well as if.
Should we be discussing this in the shade?
I can provide an update to the commission this way, but, uh, I'm just letting you know.
You're sharing strategy with them that they didn't ask for damages, so you're saying ask for damages?
It's public record, they filed this, so, um, I'm not discussing strategy. Uh, in fact, I was actually gonna say, because it's pending litigation, anything other, I'm just giving you the information of what transpired. Uh, so the, the petition has been reviewed, um, and it's, uh, the court conducted that review. They've issued an order to show cause and it's, so we will have thirty days to file a written response, we're getting ready to prepare all of that. Um, we're coordinating to, um, also get a certified record, which is part of it, since it's more of like an appellate procedure within the circuit court. Um, so that's where we are. So the next step is for us to just kind of prepare on our, on our end. Should there be a need of, to really discuss legal strategy, uh, risk assessment or anything like that, I will certainly let you know. Or if you choose to request, um, to have a closed session to discuss it. Um, I, you know, we're ob, I'm obviously open to that, but I just wanted to let you know that, that lawsuit has been filed and we're, we're gonna respond to that, to it on behalf of the city. And that is all.
That's it, okay. Uh, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock?
Yes.
Okay, tomorrow morning at nine o'clock, we have the groundbreaking. Uh, so just to remind you all about that. Okay, uh, I know we're trying to get out of here. Uh, the longer you work in public administration, the more you realize work is not about power, process or praise, it's about stewardship in its purest form. The responsibility to care for something that would never belong to you. The understanding that everything you manage will one day belong to someone else and your name will not be attached to it. There's a cost to living in the space between duty and exhaustion. The workload is not only, is not the only weight. The heavier piece is knowing that no matter how carefully you plan, there will be noise, misinformation, anger, shifting priorities, and the chase for credit that turns serious work into a spectacle. People who last, uh, in what we do do not endure because they stop caring. They endure because they learned that noise is not a measure of worth. The job is not to win every argument, the job is to keep the system honest. Let process outlast opinion and let truth outlast the narrative of the week. What we do is not about controlling outcomes, it's about creating conditions where good outcomes remain possible. Management arranges what exists, leadership shapes what might endure. The difference looks small on paper and enormous in practice. The world may not remember the names of most of us. Functioning communities are the proof that someone cared enough to do the work well, not perfectly faithfully. The record shows up in small reductions of risk, in tighter handoffs across departments, in fewer surprises, faster recoveries, in people who notice problems sooner and solve them closer to the source. We're what, we're all we got. We got work to do. We got work to do for the people. It's not about us, it's about them. I, you know, George said, you know, it, it was a tough day. I think that, you know, it was a little different, but I don't think anyone walks away angry. We all know we got something to do. We gotta be focused and we gotta get it done. Let's stop playing and let's start working. Adjourned.